You know, there's, it's five to ten, you know.
Change of social gender, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the what? Oh.
Because I throw down, or fifty big, I started looking up sort of like.
Is he the one on?
I don't think.
We got two, we got a BMW. He's kind of smurfing.
Yeah, but that's exactly where they live.
Well, is there anything to do, which I say this is people?
Uh.
Their neighbors.
Chair. Before we are. But we can add.
Well. And ready to go?
Uh.
Donna, we.
Are you muted?
We are muted.
It's good.
All right.
That's right. It would be meeting without.
Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, September ninth, twenty twenty four Board of Supervisors meeting. This meeting is now called to order. Ms. Whitten, will you now conduct the roll call?
Supervisor Lewis.
Resident.
Supervisor Day. Supervisor McDaniel.
Here.
Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
And Chair Ayers.
Here. We will now offer an invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate, but if you'd like to join us, please stand.
Dear Lord, as we draw close to the anniversary of the terrible attack on our country on September eleventh, help us remember those souls we lost so that we may never forget. We pray for your continued comfort for their families, the FDNY, and our own first responders here in Rockbridge. These favors we ask in your name, amen.
But it's a very deep. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will hold citizens' comments near the beginning of the meeting. We will do our best to take citizen comment remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. To join by telephone, you may dial in to one of the numbers listed in, on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature, and you can press the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you are calling in by telephone. Now, we will appoint Brandy Whitten as acting clerk from oh nine, September nine, twenty twenty four to September thirteenth, twenty twenty four. From. Well, I'll finish. From, from time to time in Mr. Suter's absence, the board has appointed Ms. Whitten as the acting clerk to perform the duties of the clerk of the board, specifically signing documents approved by the board as such. Is there a motion? And there is to appoint Brandy Whitten as acting clerk. Um, and Mr. Lewis is, do I have a second?
Second.
All righty. Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day. And I vote yes. Are there any changes to our agenda?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Dryden would like to introduce the new intern for the county attorney's office.
Very nice.
Just add for citizens' comment.
Come up here. Uh, we're very lucky this year. We have the Washington League part of their third year law school program. All students are required to do externships to actually work as in lawyers' offices. And we received a call from Washington League asking if we had space for someone. And luckily, we have Martin Flores. Martin's a three L first year there. He's the editor in chief of Law Review. And he's already has an appointment to serve as a clerk for a Justice Mann at Virginia Supreme Court when he finishes his third year. So we got quite a bright fellow. He's already done some good work for us. He's filed a motion that he drafted with the court already, and it looks like that's going forward. We haven't heard that back yet on it, but um, but he's uh, comes in and works hard every day. So just wanted to introduce Mark Toll.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
And Martin will be here for once.
Yes.
My whole.
Uh, we will now welcome citizens' comments. When your name is called, please address the board at the podium stating your first and last name and magisterial district. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Do we have anybody signed up?
No, ma'am.
Okay, is there anyone online who has not raised their hand or has raised their hand?
No, ma'am.
Okay, is there anyone in the meeting room who wishes to address the board that did not sign in? Feel free to come up. If you'd like to know. All righty. Approval of the August twenty six, twenty twenty four minutes. Did everyone have time to review the minutes? And if so, do I have a motion to approve?
Some of them.
Mr. McDaniel, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day. Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis. And I, oh, I'm sorry, and I vote yes. County financial report and appropriation resolution, Mr. Harrison.
Uh, yes, uh, we are requesting a resolution authorizing the payment of bills for this period. The total amount is six hundred fifty three thousand, one hundred seventy three dollars and seventy six cents. And the total general fund appropriations amount to two hundred twenty one thousand, one hundred seventy, of which one hundred ninety three thousand, six hundred seventy are FY twenty four carryover funds for capital projects. And that should be the last of the FY twenty four uh, carryovers. Uh, we are a little bit behind on uh, again, our, make sure our balance sheets um, are accurate, uh, so we'll have those available uh, at the next board meeting. But the county treasurer and Julie are doing a great job um, making sure it's uh, they're working out some kinks and they're doing a great job doing it, but it will be ready.
Right, are there any questions, comments? Your motion to adopt.
Oh, hey.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Services contract extension for A Morton Thomas for ENS control and stormwater plans, Mr. Harrison.
Uh, yes, uh, we have a current agreement with A Morton Thomas for the um, doing uh, the mandated, the state mandated ENS controls from water plans. This is a two-year renewal. There's a five percent increase, but that is over a two-year period. And we're asking the board to renew that agreement.
All right.
Or approve the resolution.
Gentlemen, are there any questions?
No, the only one provided us good service.
Thank you.
We approve the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yeah.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Consideration of affirmative vote policy, Mr. Dryden.
Uh, this is an item that we brought up before the board in August twelfth meeting. And at that meeting, we were directed by the board to prepare a resolution to consider affirmative vote policy. The purpose of this policy is to clarify that if there are, if the board, uh, if a motion is made to the board to approve a ordinance and that motion fails, then that will be treated as though the motion was rejected. And that was to avoid the confusion that we had back um, in May, when we had a vote by the board to approve which failed and then a vote by the board to reject which failed. And so now we did as, for the research was done, something I probably should have known beforehand, but Chris Layton brought to my, my um, information that the planning commission's bylaws actually include similar language. So we already do have a body within the county which includes that. And this is a language who's similar to other jurisdictions in the Commonwealth. So the, the language is before you like to read what's, what it's been done in the form of an amendment to an already existing uh, rules of procedure, resolution was passed by the board two years ago at the time of the Saint Dustin's Academy concern where, and that, the reason why that was passed at that time was to allow the board to reconsider motions, not at the end of the meeting, uh, when the motion was made, when a vote on motion was made, but at the end of the subsequent meeting. And the reason why we had to have a special rule for that is because that's not what Roberts Rule says. So you've adopted a rule which allows some additional time. Uh, what I've added to that, uh, the existing rules added clause number three, which says failure of a motion to approve an ordinance is a denial of the ordinance. If a motion to approve an ordinance that is properly made and seconded by members of the Board of Supervisors fails to pass when brought to a vote before a properly constituted form of the board, such failure to pass shall be deemed as an affirmative denial of the ordinance by the board. And that is the change in the language that's being asked to, to be brought before the board today, considered whether to adopt or to reject or to amend as the board sees fit.
All right, very good. Are there any other questions about this? Not, are we ready?
When it's a, wait, for whatever reason, there's only four members. What happens if it's a two-two tie?
Uh, a two-two tie would be considered a rejection, so vote again. So that's something to keep in mind. And that's um, by Roberts Rules, if there's a tie, then the motion fails that it was made.
But we have a policy that people can join the meeting by Zoom still.
Yeah, so people are still allowed, members are still allowed to join by Zoom when they have um, for sickness at any time for uh, for points of personal privilege, I believe they're allowed one or two times per year at the chair's discretion.
And we can extend the deadline as well. I mean, we can extend to another meeting or not close the meeting.
And, and, and this, and that can be brought up again in the following meeting as a point to reconsider. The, the point, the motion to reconsider is for anyone who's on the prevailing side of the motion has until the close, uh, the adjournment of the subsequent meeting to make a motion to reconsider. The only place where that couldn't be done is when you have to act within thirty days of the close of a public hearing, as we had to in the previous case. So if this is an ordinance which is, comes out of a public hearing and you have a meeting um, that's thirty days afterwards, you have to act on that uh, item before you, it would apply to the public hearing. So you, the motion reconsider would work in that situation. But that, the, these cases are all fairly unusual. You know, from what I've looked at, I've only seen two times that I'm aware of in the history of the board where this has come up. But it's uh, the purpose of this was to avoid confusion, to make it clearer to the public what, what is happening and to the board members, but.
So if it's a two-two, who, who's the prevailing to, to bring it back up at the following?
That, that would be those who voted against it because it would be considered a failing because it considered it failed. So if you, if someone makes a motion to approve an ordinance and it's a two-two tie, then the two that voted against that would be considered on the prevailing side. And those would be the two that would have the ability to bring it for reconsideration in subsequent meeting.
Now, if a motion to deny fails, does that mean it's approved?
No, we, we specifically stayed out of that area because it could lead to a few more, a little more confusion. And so to, as, 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 as the supervisor's day, as you remember, as we spoke about this at one point, trying to even get the words out right sometimes be a little bit confusing. So I think that in the way it's done throughout, for all the policies I was able to see where this is done, including our planning commission is uh, is only in the case where there's a firm emotion to approve fails, not in the case where most didn't I um, fails. Now, you still have the ability to make a motion to deny. So the motion die is, is still available, but it um, uh, it would be up to you whether to do that. Yeah, because it's, the motion approved, it fails to be the same as a motion denied.
And currently, if we have four people, if it's two-two, it still fails.
Well, yeah, that's a Roberts Rule.
That's our current policy anyway.
It is, and, and just to make things clear is the board has adopted Roberts Rules as guidelines. They aren't substantive rules. So you do have the flexibility to any time to suspend rules and act however you want to. So even if we adopt this rule, anybody can make a motion to suspend the rule and say, I don't want to do this now. And if the majority of the board approves, it can be. So Roberts Rules aren't substantive. They don't give rights to anybody in particular. They're just to make things move more smoothly. And that's the purpose of this is to make things more smooth.
All right, very good. We ready now? Any other questions? Your motion to adopt proposed resolution.
I'll move to adopt.
Mr. Lyons, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Day, Mr. Lyons.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
No.
Mr. Lewis.
No.
And I vote yes. Consideration of county administrator contractual policy. Mr. Dryden.
The purpose of this resolution to be brought before you is we currently, um, it is arguable that the county administrator has the authority extended to him from the board to sign contracts for funds which are uh, for budgets which are approved and funds which are allocated by the board. However, that's um, it's, there's not been, in my research, I have not found a resolution by the board which specifically grants these uh, rights to the county administrator. This is means that um, in theory, that every contract that the county minister is required to sign needs to come before the board, no matter how small it is. Uh, I've done some research on this and it's, it becomes apparent that in most jurisdictions, county administrators give me the authority to sign contracts up to a certain amount uh, without having to bring them to the board. And this would also apply to contracts. An example of this would be we have a upstairs, if you remember, the rental assistance offices are currently being rented out, rented by the, because we no longer, the county no longer provides the rental assistance services. It's Virginia Housing provides those. And so Virginia Housing has rented that space from us for the time being in order to, that their employee can continue to provide the services. Uh, in that situation, uh, is county administrator Suter has went ahead and signed the contract to, with uh, Virginia Housing, so we get a small amount of money on a monthly basis for that. Uh, I, as county attorney, I want to make sure there's clear legal authority to act in that manner and that we don't have to bring everything to the board. The reason why this is even more important and the type of government which we have is called the traditional form of government, which means that all rights actually are vested with the county administrators. And the county minister, you, county ministry, the county, sorry, all rights are vested with the county supervisors. And the county supervisors don't even have to hire a county administrator. That's done at, at your pleasure to help the administration of the county. And so because of this, I thought it would be best to actually make it clear that the county minister does have the right to sign contracts up to a certain amount and not, and clear limits is right above a certain amount. Uh, as such, what we've done is uh, in discussion with staff and with the county administrator, we felt that a hundred thousand dollars would be an appropriate amount uh, limit to which the county administrator could uh, go ahead and sign contracts. And this would only be for uh, for services or goods which are required that have, the, the budget is already, money is already budgeted for and the funds have already been appropriated by the Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
Um, anything above that, um, for example, the, the contract that we are currently negotiating with Tyler for the, for software systems, those are clear who would have to be brought to the board supervisors uh, for your approval before, even though you've already allocated the, the funds for it. I think that's, so that's what's before the board now. Uh, supervisor Suter would also have, sorry, uh, county administrator would also have the right uh, to sign these small contracts, such as the one I mentioned for the rental of the room upstairs, which is, I think, eight hundred dollars a month or so, I think is what we get for.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Sounds reasonable to me. Sounds a good idea to you.
I knew this had been discussed and was common, but I didn't expect the, now it's. But if it's already, but. We proved budget, it's not surprise, not even enough.
I mean, we've already approved the actual spending of the money and I would assume the contract. We've already, we've already discussed.
If I made the.
Were we talking about Tyler?
No, 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 we're talking about the hundred thousand dollar limit.
Also, so we can make it more aligned because we want to come with the state small purchase policy is what a hundred thousand is coming from to try to, we're working on bringing to the board a small purchase policy that aligns with the state.
And that, and that's a good point too, because this is actually, uh, our overall goal is to revise the county's procurement policy and to bring it more in line with the state procurement policy. And in many jurisdictions, the authority for the county administrator to sign contracts is actually contained within their procurement policy itself.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, at this stage, aren't ready to bring a current, the revised procurement policy before the, the board, but that will happen uh, in, in not too long time. And felt that it might be good to have this done. This would be also another example of, of something we brought before the board that would normally contain the current policy was a surplus policy, surplus property policy, which you approved a few months back, authorizing the county administrator to dispose of, of surplus property up to a certain limit. Uh, this is to catch similar things. It's, there is, as I mentioned before, there's an argument to me that, that once you've approved a budget and once you've appropriated the funds, um, the county minister actually has a statutory obligation to spend the money as you've appropriated it. So there's an argument to me that he doesn't necessarily need this secondary approval. However, in my mind, I would like to see it a direct, since the authority to approve all contracts sits solely with the board supervisors. I would like to see a board, uh, and, and a policy in place which makes it clear up to what limit the county minister issue has to approve.
So this doesn't change the procurement policy. We still goes out to bid, you know.
That, that doesn't change any of those actions. It, it, it just makes it clear to what level um, the county administrator can go ahead and, and execute contracts without having to be, bring that contract before the board to get the board's approval. And as we normally would do when we have a contract, we'd bring it before the board, the board would approve it, and then the board would then direct the county administrator to execute the contract on behalf of the board. Because the board supervisors in our form of government is the only one that has the authority to execute any contract of any size. This is to clarify that, to make it so you don't have to approve a five thousand dollar contract or, and we chose a hundred thousand dollar limit because we thought that might be appropriate, but that's the board, that's uh, you have the right to amend that, to increase or to decrease this according to what you think might be appropriate.
So this is part of the procurement that, that we're updating.
This is a step towards getting the final procurement policy to the board sometime. We just thought it'd be good to bring this forward now instead of waiting till later.
Mm-hmm. Not being on finance. Um, and, and I, I don't mind that the contracts come up and that were reviewed and updated about the things that the county is doing, that, that doesn't, that's never bothered me. I mean, I understand that sometimes there's a time constraint on, on Mr. Suter and trying to get things done. Um, I think it's also a good idea that the public hears again how their money is being spent, so uh, but I want government to work well, so what is, what are others' thoughts on this? Are we ready for this? Would you like to wait a bit as part of the other procurement? Work?
I, I know you said that, you know, but fundamentally, we've approved the budget, so we've approved the monies to be spent. But there wasn't a air said, how will we be notified? I mean, will, will the contracts still be approved by the supervisors?
Uh, well, the way this is worded right now, no, the contracts would not have to be brought before the supervisors unless the amount was greater than one hundred thousand dollars. But the, but how the money is actually spent would be included in the budget information that was actually reprovided by the finance. And that, and that's, those are good points because this is, this is your, you're the only, this body has the authority for all the contracts. And, and if you're uncomfortable with that, we can either postpone it or, or, or we can vote against it. So that's, or change anything, it's perfect, that's.
And of course, anything that's not in the budget that comes along, all new projects have to come back before the board.
That's right, yeah, and, because first it'd have to be approved for spending the money and then also things we brought before that. But it's a but, but that, that is for efficiency and to make things a bit smoother. For me, my concern was on, we do have some small things that come across that uh, contracts that might be in the low thousands of dollars that seem to, and that need to be signed fairly quickly. And I think there's been a few times where we've ratified afterwards the signatures.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this would be to make clear what level we have that. Um, Fairfax County gives two hundred thousand dollars approval to their county administrator to do that. A few other ones have higher numbers. This, this language here came out of uh, Pawat, Pawanta County? I pronounced that wrong, but there, it was a, it was, I found a resolution they had done and I just. Powantown County, so it's not an exceptionally large one. And found a resolution they had done and I modified some language in it. So it's always best to follow what other people have done in the past. So that's, that's where it comes from. So some, even some smaller jurisdictions allow this, but that's, it's, it's, it is clearly at the board's discretion because this is, this is your authority.
Well, right now, our procurement requires bids on anything over.
It's, it's a, is that thirty thousand dollars for certain things and fifty for others?
No.
Oh, sorry.
We do, I don't know, anything over five, five thousand, we have to get three bids and. So ten thousand we have to start.
Yeah, it's relatively low.
It's very low. I, I've never seen it. That, this is the first jurisdiction in my coiniers.
Over the procurement amount without getting bids on it.
But you have the oral bids up to thirty thousand, I believe. And then, and then you just have to three, and then you have to formal RFP process above that. And when it goes RFP process, and that's always brought before the board prior to that going out, so any law. And when it goes RFP process, and that's always brought before the board prior to that going out. So any large, any, so any contracts would be a hundred thousand. You would not only have seen them because of the budgeting and, and then allocating the funds, but then also you would be aware of the RFP. But, but to keep in mind, the goal is to move us more in line with the state levels so the small procurement our limit would go up much higher. We, our, our goal, which we'll bring before the board at some point, would be basically to adopt the state procurement rules as our procurement policy. And so that, so i- if that rises, then the, then what gets brought before the board would also be modified.
Chair, it would be all right. I, I'd like to table this for a meeting or two for us to have more discussion on it before we vote.
We'll do that if that's okay with everybody else.
That, that should be actually done as a motion, so.
I'll second that.
All righty. Uh, Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
And I vote yes. And I believe that brings us to appointments. Board is, for a library board of trustees, Tom Goodall resigned. Uh, the board has received one application to fill the vacancy on the library board of trustees. The application was submitted by Sharon Billings. There are no other applications on file. Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Billings? Day, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, mathly, uh, monthly staff reports, if everyone has reviewed the reports and have no questions, concerns, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day, and I vote yes. Are there any board comments or committee updates? If not, we will consider closed meeting.
I move that the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors convene in a closed session to discuss the following as permitted by Virginia Code two point two dash three seven eleven A three, discussion or consideration of a matter involving economic development for acquisition of real property for public purposes.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Lewis.
Hi.
And I vote yes. You're now in closed session. Gentlemen, expecting, I.
I don't think so.
I don't, I don't believe so. I don't know. I said.
Looks like nobody?
Well, I'm sure just that the board's verified that in the closed meeting this included to the best of each member's knowledge. Nothing was heard, discussed or considered except the matter or matters specifically identified in the motion to convene in closed session and lawfully permitted to be discussed. I exempt from open meeting required I exempt from open meeting requirements under the provisions of the freedom of the House.
All right, is there a second? Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
And I vote yes. And now, is there any unfinished business? All right, we're joining this meeting?
With, I guess our October meeting, will that be on a Tuesday?
Do we?
Typically, typically we have them September and November, but I thought we had discussed having it October and November.
The reason, that's going to be, I leave this point here. And that is going to be really difficult. Let, maybe we need, maybe we need to have a conversation with them, see about that. They, I thought Phillip was supposed to reach out to us because didn't we get an email saying, can you guys talk about when to have this meeting?
Well, it, I think it was originally scheduled to be September and November. And at our last executive meeting, we talked about changing it to October and November.
I got a notice from their publication, they've already published it.
Okay.
Change of time that they're already publishing.
The executive meeting, the executive, not the, oh, it's the joint. Well, we don't even have, okay.
It's at the, is that the Heights? All right, the middle school.
Thanks for keeping us.
It was on my calendar.
Yeah, it's on mine too. It's a normal scheduled thing, but it could have gotten moved, but I didn't know.
Well, yeah, maybe nobody let her know, just like nobody lets you know.
Angela didn't let me know.
But the October Columbus Day, that would be on Tuesday.
Yeah, we'll be closed Monday, it'll be a Tuesday.
Thank you very much. All right, if there's anything else, do you have any county fire starts, there's a fire in charge. All right. Looks like we might have good weather for it. Think it's a nice week.
I think so.
Best day since your liaison, that I'd be interested to know the attendance numbers and revenue difference between Glasgow and Porser. Once it's all done.
Well, comparison would be good.
There's no ride decision.
I'd be interested to know the revenue.
Well, what, what my intentions are is to inform the board that they need to report back to this board. You know, with the report and, and it'd be probably nice if they bring the couple previous years. I don't think we've had a report from the board for several, several years like that.
Years and years ago, they used to submit a report, but, and not recent years.
Okay, thank you for that update. Anything else?
If I win the drawing, we, we have to deliver it to the house.
No, but you could probably come here and pick it up and ride it. Got it.
All right.
Like a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis. And I vote yes. Good night, thank you all.